Roll call, please.
Second.
Ms. Albritton?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Franklin?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes. We have no action out of closed session, so we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is public address. And this is where the board sets aside 30 minutes with a maximum of three minutes per citizen to address the board on items of educational interest. And at this time, we have two people who have signed up in advance. And the first person is Connie Froggett.
Is everything working, time of work and everything?
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Jones. My name is Connie Froggett and I reside at 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road in Montgomery County. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Blacksburg High School Parent Teacher Student Organization. Today, at our regular meeting, we unanimously passed a resolution asking the school board to allow Montgomery County Secondary Schools to switch to a nine-week grading period, with the option for our block schools to be exempt from this policy. This resolution was the result of an independent survey of Blacksburg High School parents and students conducted by the PTSO, which indicated that our parents and students prefer the nine-week grading period over the current six-week grading period by a margin of six to one. Like many MCPS policies, what's best for our schools on traditional schedule is not necessarily best for our block schools, and vice versa. In the end, we believe this decision should be made at the school level, rather than mandated by the school board for the entire county. It has been the tradition in Montgomery County Public Schools to accommodate both scheduling models, and this is evident throughout the MCPS policy book. We hope when you address this issue, you follow that tradition by establishing a policy that accommodates both scheduling models. I would also like to express my thanks and support for the budget recommendation presented by Mr. Meadows yesterday. I think it is a well-balanced approach that provides for many of the schools immediate operating needs while addressing the capital needs we have now and will have in the future. I sincerely hope that the Board of Supervisors approves this budget and the requested tax increases. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up is Andrea Langston.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Langston and I reside at 850 Cole Hollow Road in Montgomery County. MetLife recently released results of its annual survey of the American teacher, revealing teacher job satisfaction at its lowest in 25 years, just 39 percent. This is no surprise in my professional circles, but might be easier for non-teachers to understand using a metaphor of the destructive cycle in an abusive relationship. In this metaphor, passionate and dedicated educators are the victims of a destructive cycle in their relationship with you and all the others who make financial, political, or instructional decisions that bruise and batter them as professionals. When you make decisions about teaching and learning based solely on data collected from test scores, it's like a blow that would leave black eyes and swollen lips on the teachers we strive to be. Teachers that educate minds, foster individuals as compassionate and caring members of society, and spark interest and curiosity in learning that doesn't equate to bubbles students might fill in on an SOL or benchmark test. When you make decisions taking away more and more support personnel and resources and gutting more and more teaching positions, it equates to breaking our legs as we work to help each child be successful as a learner, even though they all come to us from different places. Some with adults at home who value education, some from homes where there isn't enough food in the house on a regular basis, some from homes that see school as a daycare or an all care, some from homes where going to school is negotiated on a day-to-day basis, some from homes that have transient adult figures with no stability, some with glaring issues of neglect. Some students come on grade level academically and others do not. And yet, a large portion of our evaluation is based on getting all of these students to the same place in one year of instruction. So you break our bones as you vote on proposals and make policies that have huge impacts on our ability to help each child. You cripple us and expect more. My middle school colleagues believed you just needed more information to understand their work with students. They put tireless hours into preparing and bringing you their message, the research to back up their beliefs and practices, and appeals to let them be part of the conversations about changing their school culture and community. It felt like a punch in the stomach when they were told they couldn't be added to the agenda to give you a formal presentation, but instead were relegated to public address and three-minute time limits. It felt like a knife stab when two insurance agents were afforded an open-ended timeframe in a question-and-answer dialogue session with you. And when this proposal that will ultimately change schools' cultures and communities by cutting several more teaching positions was called to motion, it felt like a kick to the pavement when you asked few questions and in short order voted in favor of the superintendent's recommendation. This metaphor might help anyone make sense of teachers declining job satisfaction. One might be surprised it isn't even lower. I thank Ms. Franklin, Ms. Foster, and Ms. Albritton for their votes showing a commitment to students as individuals, rather than test scores, data reports, and budget pawns. Thank you for at least acknowledging the teacher voice.
That concludes all who have signed up at this time. If there's anyone else that would like to step forward, please do so and state your name and address. Seeing no one, public address is now closed. Next item on the agenda is the approval of consent items. Is there anything that people want to -- board members that want to approve on consent or pull to review? Hearing none, items approved on consent. The next item on the report -- the next item is the personnel report. I need a motion to approve the personnel report.
Second.
Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor of personnel report signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the payment of the bills. Any motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the bills? You have a statement before you? All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's reports, recommendations, and announcements. Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Our first item this evening is Margaret Beeks Elementary School Safe Routes to School 2013 Infrastructure Grant Project. VDOT Safe Routes to Schools Grants facilitate projects designed to make walking and biking a safer option for students and families. You've seen a number of these grants over the last few months. This is the second Safe Routes to School application addressing the needs around Margaret Beeks Elementary. In the current proposal, the town of Blacksburg has requested funding to construct a continuous sidewalk on Hubbard Street from Main Street to the Airport Road. I recommend your approval of this grant application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the grant application? All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is our Montgomery County Public Schools Gifted Plan for the time period 2013 through 2018. I'd like to ask Diane Naff, our supervisor for gifted programs, to come to the podium and share some of the key facts from the proposed gifted plan for 2013-18. This item is presented to you this evening for your information. Diane? You think we've lost her? Well, Lois, I'm going to ask you then if you would come up and take a stab at this since you've been working with Diane on her presentation. I bet she thought we were going to be later than this.
Maybe so, I'm not sure. Let me pull it up.
Sorry, I put you on the spot.
That's not a problem. What Diane planned to do was simply to go over the format of the gifted plan. And I'm trying to get my iPad to pull that one up. This year, what she has done is she has included the gifted plan in the board packet for you. The entire plan is present for you to read over, and next time would be the approval. The plan this year includes -- it is a new five-year plan, so this is -- will be good for five years. The first part of the plan is the identification goals and objectives. So when you look through that, it will talk about how you identify a gifted student's, what the goals and the objectives will be, the delivery of services, how the services would be provided to the students. Curriculum and instruction goals and objectives goes over the breakdown of -- we look at reading and we look at math in our gifted program, so it'll go through that portion for you. Professional development goals. The gifted teachers are required to have a certain amount of professional development. Not only the teachers that are certified and gifted, but the classroom teachers also need a certain amount of professional development. So the plan will talk about how we plan to do that. Equitable representation. This year is the first year that the -- that is a separate category in the gifted plan. And at the end of each year, we have to look and make sure that we have equitable representation of all students, just like you do with the SOL subgroups. And then, you must have parent and community involvement. And as you know, we have the gifted advisory that we work very closely with. And then, there's an appendices, which goes through the forms. So if you would review those at your leisure, and then certainly, next time Diane will be present to answer questions. Did I cover that okay, or did you hear it? All right. Yes.
Our parents on the advisory committee, I don't -- I'd assumed that, but I couldn't find it.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what it's made up of.
Yeah, thank you.
Parents and community members.
Pardon?
Parents and community members.
Oh, awesome.
And teachers as well.
Thank you.
From all four strands.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Ms. Franklin, you have a question?
I have a question. It may be related to the plan. But with the elimination of the two-year, second grade screening, have we seen -- is this appropriate now, or should I wait?
I put in some alternate things other than the tests that we were using. In addition to the tests, we had some other measures, like the King Goran Observation Inventory. So right now, we don't have that test available as for all second graders, but we're still, as we're starting to make sure that we have that equitable representation. We have some students that are in our talent pool, and we're still using some of that test, but taking that out of gifted funds. So I still have that availability for those students that I feel like we need to make sure that we've got a non-verbal test for.
Thank you.
Board members, any additional questions? Okay. This information -- this was brought to the board for information only at this time and will be brought back at the next meeting?
That is correct, for action.
For action, I approve.
So if you have anything that you come across as you look through it, and you'd like for us to be prepared to provide you additional information, if you just let us know, we'll be glad to.
And I do have some paper copies available at the office, so if somebody prefers that, I'd be glad to share those with you.
Thanks Diane. Thanks Lois. Appreciate it. Our next item is the calendar. The calendar this evening is proposed for the board to consider for the 2013-2014 school year. It is different from some recent years in that students do not start until Wednesday, September 4th, 2013, and teachers begin on Tuesday, August 27th. The later start date was proposed because of the -- for one year only to facilitate the opening of two new high schools. I recommend your approval this evening of the calendar as presented. In a related discussion that surfaced last meeting, I have included a calendar that would illustrate the impact of moving all grade reporting to a nine-week calendar. It is a transition that is easily made in the calendar and would not disrupt the adopted calendar that you see before you for this evening. We are currently surveying secondary teachers about their interest in moving to nine-week grading periods. As of this afternoon, we'd had about an 80 percent response rate, so we're going to get good input regarding the nine-week grading period, and it would not impact your calendar adoption this evening. In your board update this week, I also shared the potential to reconvene the calendar committee to consider a 2014-2015 calendar, thus establishing our school calendar for the next two years. And I hope that the board will provide me some direction on your interest in this issue during the new business discussion at the end of the agenda. So for tonight, I'm presenting the 2013-2014 calendar for your consideration and approval this evening.
Board members, for sake of discussion, I need a motion.
I move that we accept the calendars as stated.
Second.
Now, discuss the calendar. Board members, questions, comments for the superintendent?
You said that this is set up for nine weeks grading periods?
No, it's set up on your current grading period, which is some nine weeks and some six weeks. But I have one of the attachments. The second one is a draft that would show what it would look like if we went to all nine weeks, and it has no impact, really.
Well, it really does. It saves teachers a lot of wear and tear.
Oh, the grading does, but it doesn't have an impact on the calendar.
Right.
Yes, it reduces teacher paperwork time and...
I'd like -- I made the motion, I would like to amend it, to accept the calendar as set up for the nine-week grading. Is that appropriate?
I'd like to discuss that separately.
Yes.
Okay.
Because of what was presented tonight to us.
To change it.
Sure.
But it sounds like if we wanted -- if the nine-week was implemented in this for some of the schools, that doesn't need board approval, right? Or doesn't?
Well, the board -- the grading periods are currently adopted by the board, and they're in your board policy. So my plan was based on the outcome of the survey that we're currently doing to bring you all a recommendation, because the input is coming back to us, school, identifiable by school, so that I could tell you if there were a group of schools that were against it, or a group of schools that were for it, or whether there was uniform consensus. So I would bring that back to the board.
Does the whole system have to be uniform with grading periods?
It has not been.
No, that's what I thought. So it could -- there could be some discrepancies, differences, grading periods, depending on school or something.
So this would affect all the elementary schools?
The nine-week calendar would have an impact only on the secondary schools, because currently, your elementaries are on nine weeks.
Okay.
But then...
And is it two of the high schools are block?
Two are block. That would be Christiansburg and Eastmont. And Blacksburg and Auburn are currently on a traditional schedule.
So it would affect those two, and the two on block would stay?
They might -- you know, we're asking them. It is very possible that a block school could do a nine-week reporting also.
Oh, really?
Yes. There's nothing that prohibits a block school from doing a nine-week report card.
But we haven't received information from them yet?
They are being surveyed, along with all the other secondary school teachers. And it'll be -- the data that we get back will be identifiable by school. Not by teacher, but by school.
And does this have to be a school-wide policy, or can schools choose how they want to do grading periods?
Well, I think maybe what we ought to do is deal with the calendar on this one, because it's not going to make any difference to the calendar about the grading period. And then, if you've got additional questions about the grading period, I'm happy to answer those, but it might be best not to mix it into the calendar discussion. Last time, the question that was posed to me was if you change to a nine-week grading schedule for our secondary schools, would it have an impact on the calendar? And so, I only put that nine-week calendar there to show you that regardless of the decision about secondary school grading calendar, whether it's a nine-week or six weeks, it wouldn't impact your decision about the 13-14 school calendar.
Okay.
That's why that's there. But the discussion about the grading periods is really a different...
Thank you.
...discussion.
I move we accept the calendar as presented for...
Well, I already made that motion.
She's already --
Oh, pardon?
Already have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Board members, any further discussion on the calendar as presented? Okay. All those in favor signify by staying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye.
And this is for one year?
Right. So I want to make sure, did you get that? The motion didn't carry?
Ms. Foster and Ms. Franklin.
Right. Motion carried.
Our next item is planning for school moves, and much of the information that will be shared this evening was presented to you in an earlier board update. But tonight, we're going to share some key pieces of the information so as to keep the board and the public informed about our plans for the summer of 2013. My staff and I consider April 1st as a drop-dead kind of date to set to seal the move of Blacksburg Middle School from its current temporary location in Christiansburg back to Blacksburg. Once this move is set in motion, it requires that Blacksburg High School be either fully situated in the new high school, or that we develop an alternative scheduling model to put in place to support the high school and the middle school until we are able to open that school. At this time, the high school projects, both Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School, are on schedule for the planned occupancy date, and I feel very encouraged that on April 1st, everything will be a go for us to move Blacksburg Middle School to -- back to Blacksburg, and that starts the domino effect of the moves for the summer. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Shannon just to share some of the key points of the planned move and the dates of the events.
It's in your board agenda, but I also gave you a printout. It's easier to read the colored printout than the smaller version that may show up on your laptop. And the information I'm going to provide tonight, this is the framework we're using to guide the process. There's a lot of decisions and details yet that will -- yet to be made and work done with the principals and the construction schedule and so forth to fill in. But this will be the overall framework that we'll use. There are some critical decisions come up, because it's a very short timeframe from the time that school ends until we get into school opening in September with some of the substantial completion dates of the schools. And so, where we start from is from the opening day of school, which is currently the 4th of September. That's our goal, and the planning has then -- is working to open Auburn High School, open Blacksburg High School, and to have Blacksburg Middle School move back to their existing building. Now, there's a lot of things that have to happen, and our planning is we go through that. And I'll talk about Auburn first. When you look at Auburn, we have, not only with the move of the high school, we have the high school being renovated for a middle school. The timeframe that you approved is for the middle school to open the following fall. That's a year construction period, which means as soon as school ends, the contractor has to be able to get in Auburn High School and start doing some demolition work and doing work on that building immediately. It cannot wait until Auburn High School physically moves into the new building. If we were to do that, then that means the timeframe for Auburn Middle School being completed would be delayed. So the plan would be, as soon as school is over, all furniture, equipment, supplies in the existing Auburn High School will be packed up, moved out of the building, put in storage. The contractor will come in and begin demolition work on that building, asbestos removal and other projects immediately, and they'll start site work around that building. You can see from the schedule then, on the substantial completion date for Auburn High School is July 22nd. And we would be then working after we get -- even before we get to substantial completion, we'll move into that building anything that we can that will not interfere with construction. But once we have substantial completion, that means we could essentially occupy the building and be ready to prepare that for opening. And the idea would be that all furniture, equipment, and Auburn High School would then be set up by August -- no later than August 23rd, and the teachers would return on August 27th by the calendar that's just been approved. See when Labor Day is, and the first day of school right now is the 4th of September. And that's a general synopsis. A lot of details we have to fill in, working with the staff there as to what will happen with athletic teams and use of facilities, and because that will be a very congested site. There will be people inconvenienced. Athletic teams will be inconvenienced, because Auburn High School gym will not be available. The locker rooms will not be available, but they won't quite be ready in the new school. So we'll be having to make adjustments for either using Auburn Elementary or sharing other facilities that we have and working with the teams to transport. So it will be -- it will be a very busy summer.
Mr. Polly and Mr. Simkins have already been working on a transition plan to accommodate the summer athletic needs for the school, and they believe that they have methods for solving that problem, but it does involve us using the elementary school property as well for some of the things that might go on that summer.
And we'll be having several meetings over the next months to work through and plan some of the moves and the details of the moves. We've been fortunate by having to move several schools lately, whether we wanted to or not, has given the staff a pretty good experience on being able to plan moves. We just don't want to do it as fast as we had to do it on some of the recent events. We'd like to have a little more planning time. Any questions on Auburn?
Okay. You made the comment that September 4th, that, you know, we'd be ready to go back to school, but you kind of made it -- left it open the way you phrased it. Are you thinking...
No, it's the -- that is the approved date for the opening of school.
Right.
Now, in our planning, should something happen, that Auburn High School is not ready to open on the 4th, we'll be working with the principal to see what we've done. In Auburn, you don't have many options. You'll just pretty much have to delay the opening of the high school. But it -- with the schedule and the timeframe you have there, Auburn is -- unless something drastic happens between now and the future, Auburn should be able to open on time.
The projects are currently on time. There's no issue with that at this point.
Blacksburg, and the planning for Blacksburg involves two schools. It involves what to do with -- to move Blacksburg Middle back to their location, and then you have to clear Blacksburg High School out of the building in order to be able to move the middle school in. When you look at the schedule for Blacksburg High School, you see there's two substantial completion dates. If you recall the design for the building, there's the academic wing. You have a connection of the library and the admin, and then your auditorium cafeteria is on the other wing of the building. The academic wing is supposed to be completed first with the substantial completion of July 25th. And that's where, if that happens, that gives adequate time to be able to put the furniture and fixtures into the building and get the classroom ready for the teacher return and students return. The other area, which is the rest of support for the building, is not substantial completion, is projected at August 14th. And you can see that is a very -- would be a very tight timeframe between the time that the auditorium cafeteria and those areas are ready compared to the opening of school. But your auditorium does not require a lot of extra setup and installation of items, nor does your auditorium. There would be some in some of the classrooms that are on that end, some of the art rooms in those areas, but it's not near as extensive as it is for your academic wing. The other area that would be of major concern is getting the administration section set up and be able to get into their admin areas where they can operate. And so, we'll be working through that. It's tight. The planning is then to go ahead and pack up Blacksburg Middle School and... The planning is then to go ahead and pack up Blacksburg Middle School and have them ready to move, to pack up Blacksburg High School, move them out of their existing location, put all their stuff in storage, and go ahead and move Blacksburg Middle back to their current location. That gets them done and out of the way. It'd be pretty difficult to try and move Blacksburg Middle in the middle of moving Blacksburg High School. There's a lot of things still need to be done to the building. Once it closes, our normal plan is we go in, we totally clean the building. That takes several weeks to totally clean that building. There's some additional maintenance will need to be done. Some of the areas which we modified to support the high school won't be needed by the middle school, so maintenance has to have some time to be able to modify those. So we would do that during June and first part of July, and then get Blacksburg Middle moved back into their location before we reach substantial dates on Blacksburg High School. Soon as after we have Blacksburg Middle moved in, and as dates and things allow, we'll be moving Blacksburg High School into their new location. With it being close, it's a much closer schedule. And again, as Ms. Blacksburg brought up, it's one we'll be looking at and working with the staff there and to prepare a transition schedule. Should Blacksburg High School not be ready to open on September 4, if it's a matter of a few days, we'd probably delay opening. If you get into a longer period, then it would make sense to suspend the effort to do some alternate scheduling and may have to do as we did with the middle school before, share the building in order to get students back in contact with their teacher and school for a short period. But the anticipation is this would not be a long period. Contractors are putting all their effort into, and that's the agreement you approved and the purpose of going through the process, that they have been assuring us they will have the buildings ready as projected. And that's a pretty quick overview. But you can see this is coming up on a very busy time. Reason we're informing you that this is our planning framework, because we'll be moving pretty rapidly over the next couple of months to put these things in place. We have to go ahead and get moving companies in and looking at this and get them under contract so that we have their commitment during this period of time. If we don't, it'd be pretty hard to get their commitment to do the move. And requires a lot of logistics, but it can be done with if you plan it in advance.
Board members, questions for Mr. Shannon?
Last time when we moved Blacksburg Middle School over to the old Christiansburg Middle School, there were many volunteers over at the school packing and helping the teachers get ready for that move. Is that something that you're looking at this year?
Not required, but it would still be available to any of the schools. That'd be up to the school staff and the principal.
So they are alert to the fact that...
They would more likely to welcome all volunteers and plan for that.
We're just vetting the plan with you tonight. We've been in conversation with Mr. Wheeler, and he has, you know, taken a walkthrough of the Blacksburg Middle School, now Blacksburg High School building. And as we begin to move forward, certainly volunteers will be appreciated. The actual physical movement of the materials from the middle from old CMS over to new BMS would be accomplished by the moving company. But the actual packing in the classrooms and the other things, the media center and places that need to be packed, certainly volunteers will be needed and appreciated.
As we work with the schools and we set the dates of when these are going to happen, the goal is to have a lot of this packed by the end of the school year or a very few days after the last day of school. Once they have that information, there will be people that will step forward to help the schools. Because we know there's an interest of getting Blacksburg back into their location and getting these schools to open on time. And so any help will not be turned away.
Any additional questions for Mr. Shannon? Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Our next item this evening is the budget update. I'm going to ask Katie if she'd come up front. As you all are aware, Craig Meadows, the county manager, presented his proposed budget to the Board of Supervisors last evening, and I attended the presentation, as did Ms. Woolsey. I've asked Katie to share the key education highlights from Mr. Meadows' proposal with you this evening. And after her presentation, I'm going to make just a few comments, and then we'll entertain any questions that the board may have, and at least to the best of our abilities, since it is their proposal. But anyway, Katie, would you walk us through what happened?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. First, I'm going to discuss the General Assembly adopted its 2012-14 biennial budget February 23. And the adopted changes give us an additional $84,000 in state revenue for a total increase in state revenue, total increase in state revenue for 1314 of $700,159. The increase is primarily due to an increase in the compensation supplement of $95,597, which the General Assembly action is including that funding for both SOQ instructional and SOQ support positions in the salary increase. And you'll remember back in 2009, the SOQ funded positions were cut in half. Therefore, both instructional and instructional support positions in Montgomery County exceed the number that are funded by the state. As Ms. Blackburn mentioned, the county administrator's budget, proposed budget last night presented to the Board of Supervisors shows the school operating fund as having a $2.8 million in new funds. He included the $600,000 in new funds. He didn't have the update in there for the $700,000 that I just mentioned.
Would you just say that again? Because when you look at 2.8, say it again.
The 2.8 that he mentioned included the .6 that we had as our state increase. So they're including our state increase. The 2.2 you see on your slide is made up of 1.7 million in new growth generated funds, which they estimate their new growth is going to be a total of 2.8 million. And also includes $500,000 in revenue generated by the personal property tax rate increase, which they're proposing a 10 percent. He's proposing a 10 percent tax increase in personal property. And then the next bullet, in addition, the county administrator proposed a 2 cent real estate tax increase, which would generate 1.4 million in new revenue, which the county administrator recommended earmarking for capital, future school capital needs.
Specifically, school capital?
Yeah, specifically the school capital needs. The remaining unknown that we have in our budget is the insurance rate, which is still being negotiated. All indicators are that the increase is only going to be about .9 percent in the rate. However, the healthcare reform related items are still being discussed with the insurance company for clarification, an impact it has on our part-time employees, as well as the potential impact the changes may have on the division's cost for healthcare. There's an insurance briefing at your March 19 meeting, and you'll get more information then. So now the governor has the budget for the vetoes and suggested amendments, and then the General Assembly will reconvene April 3 to determine the final budget. As you'll see on your slide, the key future meetings, the Board of Supervisors has scheduled two community input meetings on the budget. One is Tuesday, March 12 at 7:00 p.m. at the Reiner Fire Department. The other one is Monday, March 18 at 7:00 p.m. at Price's Fork Elementary School. And then in addition to those community meetings, the Board of Supervisors tentatively scheduled a special meeting for Thursday, March 14. They've scheduled a public hearing on the tax rate and budget for March 26 at 6:00 p.m. And then the tax rate is scheduled to be set on April 15 by the supervisors adopting their budget that evening, hopefully. That's all I have.
Thank you. Katie, if you'd stay close.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to just comment on a few things that she said, and then open it for your questions. I think one of the big questions is, okay, so what's the gap? The gap between the requested funds and the recommended funds is just over $1.3 million. So we had asked the county to provide us about $3.6 million. And the proposal from the county manager is that they provide us $2.2 million in the operating budget. Mr. Meadows' recommendation that 1.7 million of the $2.4 million in growth for the county be directed to the school division is a good recommendation in that it represents over 70 percent of the total growth dollars in the county. And you historically would probably find closer to a 50/50 split. So it is a positive recommendation in that light. The proposal recommends that the 100 percent of the increased revenue from the rate increase in personal property taxes be dedicated to schools. And the rate increase for personal property taxes is 10 cents, and it's not been increased since 1994. So the 10 cent in personal property also benefits, is solely designed to benefit the schools. The recommendation that Mr. Meadows made continues to try to fill the gap between the reduced state funds and the money needed to run this school system. The recommendation is also very unique in that it does something that I've not seen happen here before, and I don't know if any of you have or not, but the recommendation creates a set aside of $1.4 million is an acknowledgement of the critical future needs for capital improvement in the school division. And that $1.4 million would come from a proposed 2 cent increase in property taxes. Most importantly, I urge the participation of the board and the community at the community input meetings that are going to be held. The first one is in Reiner on March 12 at 7:00 p.m. at the fire department. And the second one is at Price's Fork Elementary School on March 18 at 7:00 p.m. It is absolutely critical that the supervisors hear from the public and from us by our presence how important the additional funds for the school system are to providing a quality education for our students and for securing the future of the community. I know you've heard me say it before, but I really believe that as the school goes, so goes the community.
Amen.
So please mark your calendars and plan to attend these very, very important community meetings. Also, it's important that the voices of support be heard at the March 27 public hearing on the proposed budget. I would restate that the gap is $1.3 million. You will recall that last year at this time, we were sitting here facing $4.2 million. So although 1.3 is a daunting undertaking, at least it's not 4.2 that it was last year. Every effort is necessary to ensure that the gap does not get bigger than the $1.3 million that the county manager has proposed, and that voices are heard about the importance of minimizing that gap, if there's any way to do so. The budget that was presented to the supervisors represents the real needs of the school division. There are tough decisions yet to be made about the county budget, and this proposal is a starting point. So now is the time to step forward and speak up about the needs for our schools. This is our, these next few meetings are our last and best opportunities to engage the public and to engage the supervisors for at least the support that Mr. Meadows has proposed, if not even more. And at that, I would certainly open it to the board for any questions that you may have.
So was there a proposed 12 percent increase in taxes?
No. The proposed increase in taxes was 2 cents on real estate taxes. And that 2 cents would generate $1.4 million. And the county manager's recommendation is that that 1.4 go into a reserve specifically identified for future capital needs of the school division. The other tax increase that was proposed is personal property, and it was by 10 cents.
It hasn't been raised since 1994, you said?
That's correct.
Board members, additional questions for the superintendent on the budget update?
Well, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, and especially Craig Meadows and his staff for the hard work that they've put into this. It's not an easy task at all, and I think what they've come up with is certainly a good compromise, workable solution that we're going to, we're going to face a very daunting task to figure out how to close that $1.3 million gap. But I think that what they have presented is definitely workable. Also, I'm pleased to see that they're trying to look ahead and start to plan for future needs of the county and the school system as far as the capital needs and setting aside money for the capital needs. We talked a little bit about that in our meeting last Thursday, is we've got to look forward and start looking at what's just right in front of us. And we, I applaud the county manager and the Board of Supervisors for taking an honest look at what we need to do to make sure that we are prepared in case we need this money. We just never know. And we see counties around us that are suffering much worse than we are and have significant gaps to fill as well. So I do feel fortunate that we're able to do this.
Yep. I agree with Mr. Jones, and I thank the supervisors because they have always stepped up to try to support the schools. I know many of you, all of us are having discussions with folks in the community about the budget and what we should, should not do, and how we do it. But I had a comment made to me related to schools being funded in the past, education being funded in the past, and it was like, to those folks who were saying, "We shouldn't. We don't have the money. It's hard times." They said, "Well, public education was funded when they were in school," you know? And on one side, I agree with that. Yeah, right. But then when I thought about it, it's like, no, some of the hard times that we're in right now is because public education was not funded in the past, the way it should be funded. On the state level and the federal level, locality has stepped up in recent years, but that has not always been the case. You know, as the superintendent says, as goes the schools, so goes the community. And this community is growing and thriving and looked at to be one of the fastest growing areas in the whole state. If we don't have the public education to support it, it won't grow. And if it does grow, it will mean our children won't be prepared for those jobs that are coming in, and the jobs won't be here, so then the kids will go away. You know, they won't stay. So what happens to the community? Quite frankly, through my lifetime of being a resident, you know, lifelong resident, we've just become a more transit community. And it's nice to have folks come, but I'd like to have some folks stay and live here for long, long times. You know, that's what really grows community. So we have got to make sure that public education is funded, because if not, Virginia Tech's not going to keep so many people here. Public education is the key.
Board members, any additional comments, questions?
Well, it's just, again, we have a lot of mandated programs that often are not funded, and we have to do for our young people what is expected. I mean, it's our responsibility as a community. And so I'm very grateful to the Board of Supervisors at this point, and I am just hoping beyond hope somehow our General Assembly will find us some money, more money. Very sad to me.
Okay.
Well, before we leave this agenda item, I would just like to restate, because it is so critical, how important it is that there be a face of educational support in the room on the 12th, and on the 14th, and the 18th, and the, you know, 26th. And every one of those meetings, we've seen this room filled with people who are... and every one of those meetings, we've seen this room filled with people who are here to support an agenda. And so this is the time to step forward and support the most important agenda, which is the general good of public education, not an individual school, but the big picture. And so I hope we will fill the room, as I've seen it filled here before.
Good point, Brenda. Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is the school board retreat. The school board asked me to place this on the agenda so that you would have an opportunity to provide some direction and potential topics for a school board retreat to occur sometime prior to the start of the 2013-14 school year.
Board members, if you're able to navigate your, on the board docs, there's actually a, under library and non-categorized, you'll see the May retreat final report that's available to you. I guess what I'll do is open it up for comment. Board members, we normally have a retreat around the end of May, sometime in the June timeframe.
You said under not categorized?
Not categorized. It is gonna be a busy summer, but I do think that as long as I've been on the board, we have at least held it a half a day to full day retreat on topics of various interest. I guess what I'll do is open it up about, first of all, is everyone interested in a retreat for this year? And if so, do you have any topics that you'd like to discuss at the retreat? And don't everyone speak at once.
Well, I think it's always important to have a retreat.
Why don't you try to pull the mic down just a little?
I think it's important to have a retreat. I didn't know at this point that we were thinking about what we would like to discuss, but I think it's very important to have, have a retreat.
Okay.
Maybe follow up on what we've been heading toward at the other retreats.
I would agree with Ms. Albreton, except this is a daunting year coming up. We're, we're asking the superintendent to do an awful lot, and her staff to do an awful lot. And many of us are gonna be involved in that also. The retreat doesn't come cheaply, there's a dollar sign to it. My recommendation would be not to have the retreat at this coming year, primarily because of the summer that's ahead of us and the financial situation that we're in. So with those two categories, I just don't see how we can ask the superintendent to do more.
Oh, that's very thoughtful. I understand that. Brenda, how do you feel about a retreat?
I'm awaiting direction from the board.
Oh, okay. No, I just wondered if you had any concerns, any thoughts of?
I think our time's been well spent. I think tonight is the opportunity to talk about whether that's what you want to do this, this year.
I'll concur with Mr. Ivers. I think we have a lot of budget issues before us, and that's one reason I don't attend a lot of the school board conferences, is I can't put money into something like that when I know we don't have supplies in our schools. So I'm with you on this one.
Well, and even though I've always enjoyed the retreats, once I get there, I've always been someone who's kind of been a negative to that, because not only does it cost the school money, I mean, I'll be honest, it costs me money, because I lose a day and a half working. I'm in a profession that doesn't have paid days, and I don't make an hourly wage, and I don't have sick leave, so it costs me a day and a half of work. So I'm all about, you know, a Sunday afternoon small retreat if we do something like that, or, you know, just put it on the back burner and, you know, have a meeting one night with, with dinner. I don't know.
Well, I think it's important to have some time to try to plan and reflect. I know last year, there were, there was discussion on items as far as what the superintendent would like to do for the district, but because of all the challenges that we've had, has not been able to do that. Those are gonna, you know, decrease in the next year. So I would be very interested in hearing from the superintendent, you know, what's her next steps, now that she's gonna have some time to breathe and actually, you know, really put everything into the programming and the operations of the system and not just building facilities, what that would look like, because it was very inspirational to me to hear her talk about that last year. I think it's time well spent. I do that without paying for part of that myself, too, but that's part of the job from my regular job. So I think it's time well spent. I think if we did not do it, I would, I would really think it would affect how we move forward and knowing what the superintendent wants to do next, because that's, I think it's important for her to talk to us about that and help us understand why.
I agree with Ms. Franklin. I think we need an opportunity for this board. We, we, we spend too much time, in my opinion, buried in the weeds, dealing with things that don't try to, that are just right there in front of our faces, and not trying to look out strategically and listen and bring the superintendent along and try to understand where are we gonna be a year from now, three years from now, five years from now, and what are the challenges that we're facing? And what are the strategic, you know, last year, we talked about the code of conduct, student code of conduct, we talked about capital, and we talked about the strategic imperatives. And also, we had some discussions about the strands. I'm not seeing that we need to spend a day and a half. You know, we could come in and spend a morning or, you know, four to six hours and have the superintendent just update us on what her goals and what her strategic plans are, as Ms. Franklin said, after we get these buildings open, because quite honestly, you know, I don't think, all due respect, our superintendent's really been able to do some of the things that a true superintendent needs to do. We've spent too much time in project management, building management, construction management, move management, and we need to get beyond that and need to prepare for that after the opening of the school. Costs, there's every board, every county, every town, all go off on retreats. It's part of their budget, it's part of what they do. I think that we can look at how we can minimize our costs, but other government entities do it, and we're a government entity, we're elected to do it, that's part of what we're supposed to be doing, is looking out at a strategic level and try to get out of the weeds and not constantly buried in them. So I would like to think that we could at least spend some quality time together with the superintendent, addressing some things that are higher leveled than some of the things that we deal with at meeting-to-meeting basis.
If we do it locally, I mean, maybe we could pay our, yeah, I know. I agree, and, you know, if we just don't do overnight and all, we might, some of us be able to pay our own way. I mean, that's a possibility.
The topic that you're suggesting that we hear from Ms. Blackburn, I think is something that the public would like to hear about, too. So I would suggest something like that happen during a regular meeting. I can see how we could do some give and take with that, and I have to agree that at least the first, the only retreat that I've been to, it required a lot of staff members coming out that day and preparing things. So I agree that this is a very busy spring slash summer, so it doesn't seem quite ideal for this kind of setup to me.
Well, let's be clear, when we talk about retreat, it's not some big spa day and we're not going, and, you know, we're working, we're listening, we're working through issues as a board.
Right.
You know, I, I just can't imagine us not taking time once a year to try to, you know, focus on what we're doing and not edit an agenda at a meeting. You know, I just, I just can't imagine that working well for us.
I, I don't have a problem with, with exactly what you said. It's, it's, it's a gathering of us that we get together and we, we iron up, we listen to what the superintendent has, and then we move forward. I, I don't think it takes a day and a half to do that at a specific place that's set up by a specific outfit, that's gonna cost us an arm and a leg, or maybe just an arm, or whatever. I think we can do that in a, in a local situation where it would take, as, as Mr. Jones said, four to six hours of good, hard work and get it done.
And, and I'm not opposed to that, I'm just saying we need to do something, you know?
Could we do like a Saturday mini-retreat without a facilitator?
That's what I was thinking. If we were interested in doing it, what I'd like to propose is the superintendent, I kind of step back and figure, come up with some topics, and at the next meeting, we can bring some topics, you can talk about what she's trying to do, and we can look at the topics. But I'm thinking begin on a Saturday morning, eight o'clock?
I can do that.
And be done by two. The, the, I'm pretty sure that meetings are open to public, so if the public would like to come, they're more than welcome to come, as all retreats are. But I think that we do need to spend some time with the superintendent, talking about after-school construction, and now's the time to do that. And I don't think that it would take a great, it's gonna take some effort, but not, not the type of effort that we've expended in the past in previous retreats. So we'll keep this on the agenda and come back with some topics and calendars and see if we can talk about it.
And places.
And, I mean, we can do it over in the multipurpose room, you know, whatever we wanna do, we can look at some places. So I'll get with the superintendent, we'll put together a list of topics, we'll talk about how we can make it cost efficient, but I do think it's important that we focus on some strategic things and some strategic discussions.
We could do potluck.
I don't cook, Joe. Oh, stop it, Harvey. Do something. Not a problem.
The next item is your calendar for this month, and I don't believe that this particular activity is included in your calendar, but you have at your places an admission ticket to the Home Expo. Our career and technical programs will be displayed and highlighted again this year, and want to thank Rick Weaver and our CTE teachers for their great leadership in that event. There will be a few things going on on Friday evening that will be demonstrations, and then on Saturday, just an opportunity for many of our teachers and some of our students to be there with their programs highlighted. So I would encourage you to try to stop by.
Yeah, I've been for the last two years, and it's just wonderful. Unfortunately, I won't be able to be there this year, but I would encourage everyone to go and see what's going on with our career technical programs. It's great.
And many students who there also doing?
Presentations.
Yeah, it's just great. It's wonderful.
And I'm grateful that we got down for March ninth, mid-school all-district choir in our calendar, but there are not a lot of other events listed, and I've always enjoyed going to the theater programs and music programs at the schools, and I don't know how we can, you know, get more to us on what's happening, but I would really appreciate if it's possible. Because that's a highlight for me, visiting the schools.
Well, you're always welcome there. It doesn't happen to be, doesn't have to be a special event. I know you really enjoy the music events and those kind of things, but our schools welcome you to visit, just to see the great teaching that's going on each and every day, and the many programs that are in place. March is a little bit slower in terms of the big performances, because we're, really think about it, we're just coming back off the, into the second semester and getting organized. So there'll be a lot more big activities as we move toward the end of the year.
Anything that sounds, you know, anything the schools can share with us about their choirs or theater or band, whatever, I would really appreciate.
Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do board members have any unfinished business? The calendar, from the, I'm sorry?
The BOS joint.
Okay, did you, or do we want to talk about the school calendar? Is that under new? Do that under new?
The grade.
Yeah.
It can be here either, but I just want to make sure we don't forget.
Okay, all right.
What are we doing?
So unfinished business, first one is, let's talk about calendars for the joint meeting with the board of supervisors first. The April the twenty-third date would not work, and so we're back to, do you have any dates from Craig?
We were gonna give.
We're gonna give him dates. So if the twenty-third doesn't work, it sounds like April is already out, and we're moving into May.
Wow.
Paul? The fourteenth, thirteenth, that week, second week, third, well?
You're talking May?
Or the second, that first Thursday in May?
Can I suggest, did they ever do like doodle calendar, where they put some dates, and we all say what works? I mean, that's something that you?
Have you ever done?
Okay.
What'd you say?
Not everyone can do that, I guess, so this is the, yes.
So which two days did you say?
The second?
Thursday, the second.
Can we, can we not do that first week? Sorry.
That, that's out for you?
Yeah.
So our first meeting in May is on the seventh. We have a meeting on May the seventh and the twenty-first, so.
You said the fourteenth, fifteenth before?
Thirteenth, fourteenth.
Thirteenth, fourteenth.
Sixteenth.
You can do the fourteenth, we can pick somewhere around the fourteenth. You're meeting three weeks in a row, the seventeenth, the seventh, the fourteenth, and the twenty-first.
Well, we've done that before.
You act like that's something new, Mr. Jones. So what's new, huh? You wanna try for the fourteenth?
Ms. Blackburn, ideally we'd have at least two, three days to get the board to remember. They're going to have a certain same problem with their.
Right. So we have the thirteenth, what, what days did the?
Thirteen will be there.
Okay, so the fourteenth is out, so we have the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth.
What about the ninth?
Okay, does the, the ninth is our county district retirement banquet. Fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth?
Why don't we just, at this point, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, and see what they come up with?
Maybe ask the day for another week.
Another week? How about the twenty-second?
It's Wednesday.
Mm-hmm, you're coming up on graduations, but at least it's another week. Twenty-second? Okay, that's four. And what about the eighth?
Did we look at?
June?
The last two days of April.
May, oh.
Did we look at what? Nothing worked in April. What about the eighth of May?
Did Sarah, did you just say that didn't work for you?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so let's take these days, we got the eighth, the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, and twenty-second as options. See if we can get a match. Okay?
Okay. All right. Next under item, unfinished business was the, in your board update, you found a school calendar that went into the next year, the following year, fourteen, fifteen, did I say that correctly?
That's correct.
And superintendent is asking this board if we would like to be able to move forward with a two-year calendar. I think that would be, at this point, it would be approved, but would certainly come back and take a look at that before final. I mean, there's, events happen, certainly things happen along the way, would, would we think that there's any reason we would want to change that, would be my question.
Is this something the calendar committee has already recommended with us?
My, my proposal to the board is that we go back to the calendar committee.
Right.
And bring you a calendar.
Thank you.
I suggested, the one that I put in your I suggested, the one that I put in your folder was designed to show you what it would look like if we tried to go back to ending the semester before the winter break, and that got really positive reviews in almost every segment of the community.
Right.
So one of the things that we would say to the committee is that we would like to at least have that as an option to bring to the board. So I gave you a sample, because I wanted you to see that for the first year that you went back to it, you would have a compressed summer.
Right.
And that's why I gave it to you, but I think I hear a general consensus that there's some interest in trying to have two calendars approved.
I would definitely support.
I definitely would like the calendar committee to work on it.
Okay, because I thought this was already worked on the calendar, getting it out on my phone.
We developed it based on your conversation at the last meeting about the interest in potentially returning to this kind of calendar.
And we've done that's two years in the past, and saves a lot of time and...
I'd love to not do a calendar one year.
Okay, so you've got direction...
We'll reconvene the committee, we'll come back.
Okay. All right. Nine-week grading period.
Is this still old business? Yeah.
What question are you asking? I don't understand.
Oh, I wanted to hear a report from Brenda on the park and ride, the...
We're not there yet.
No, okay. Thank you.
Nine-week period? Grading on the nine-week? I see a lot of heads shaking up and down. Okay, yep.
I thought the way that the results were, we're going to hear back from the survey.
Yes, exactly. And we heard from parent tonight from Blacksburg High with a possible six-week, I don't know.
Oh, we don't. And so then we would just have another vote that would add that into the calendar that we just approved.
That's correct. When I see the data, I'll put the data in your board update.
Thank you.
And I will put the grading periods on the agenda as an agenda item with a recommendation that I'll make to you based on what the data says, and then you all can determine what you want to determine.
Now, will the 14th, 15th calendar have nine weeks in it?
It will if we make a decision, and either way, we just found out that it doesn't have a big negative impact.
And does the whole district have to do it the same way? That's my question.
Well, let's see what the data says.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Before we decide.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, you already have a mixed model.
Right, exactly.
You have elementary and secondary.
Exactly, and we have block and non-block.
And by data, you mean the survey?
The survey, yes.
Which will go to all schools?
Every secondary school.
For everyone to participate?
Nelson, is it teachers or is it every employee?
Sent to principals, going out to all teachers.
So if you want me to add...
I didn't hear a word of that.
It was sent to principals for distribution to all teachers. If you want me to add non-instructional to it, you know, or aides, I can, but it seems that your teachers would be the ones who would be...
Right, right.
The most important in that decision model.
Yes.
Okay.
And are parents involved at all?
No.
Oh.
Okay. Ms. Albritton, you have what item under unfinished business?
Yes, I would like to have an update on Falling Branch School and the Park and Ride, and hopefully, there's, the groups are working together and really for the good of our kids.
We continue to work with a number of groups regarding Falling Branch Elementary School. This afternoon, I actually took a ride out with the county manager to take a look at some of the things that have happened in the last 10 days. We've added significant signage on the property at Falling Branch Elementary School. In fact, as you come out of the parking lot, the first thing you see right in front of you is a sign that has a big red stop on it, and then advises that this is school property and not trespassers may be prosecuted according to Virginia Code. There are also a number of additional signs that have been placed inside the park and ride lot. When I was there today, they were completing the installation of temporary fencing, like snow fencing, around the perimeter of that lot. Also, I understand today, the Megabus manager was in town, I'm not sure how that, what contacts were made with him today, but they have continued to work with us very cooperatively. We currently have a Christiansburg police officer temporarily assigned at Falling Branch Elementary School. So a number of things are happening and groups are continuing to work together to promote the safety at that school. Again, I would restate, the school itself is safe.
Yeah.
The issue that we have had is that the close proximity of the park and ride leads it to be a place that travelers may go to seek assistance for either restrooms, water, electricity, any number of things. You also have at the dais, I believe, a copy of a letter that I wrote, as you had requested, to each of the various groups that are involved. The bottom line of the letter is, let's work together and make it safer right now, but long-term, we really need a plan to move the park and ride, it's just not an appropriate location because of the high traffic there, so closely adjacent to an elementary school.
Yeah, thank you for that, and are we getting some positive feedback about that? Do people seem to understand the need for the move?
If you're talking about the agencies that we've been working about, yes, we've had positive recognition that it's not the best location and that it has also exceeded its capacity.
Yeah.
The use of that particular lot has exceeded the design capacity of the space.
So you mentioned temporary fencing, and I know moving the lot is the optimum, but we know when you work with VDOT, that could take time. Is there going to be permanent fencing?
That was one of the things that we talked about. The first interim measure that could be done quickly was the snow fence, which is the, and I also have an estimate for fencing our side of the property, but we're working together to continue to decide what's the best resolution to that street traffic across from the parking lot to the school, whether we need two fences, or we need one fence, or we don't need a fence, we need something else, so.
Yeah, a move.
VDOT was bringing in a, a security consultant to come to the site to look at it, and that was supposed to happen last Thursday.
Oh, good.
And I haven't seen a follow-up on that, but that was their, to make recommendations, and one of those was, you know, how they could secure the perimeter of the parking lot and prevent people from moving over that, which would probably be some type of fencing. There's also some potential ways of entrance, changing the entrance and exits of the, to the school property and to the parking lot as well, and maybe possibly separating those out, and VDOT is looking at that.
Are we... There are some immediate and specific interventions that have taken place, and there's still some long-range planning that's going on.
You know, Christiansburg does, has put an officer there, and that officer is there. You know, I know the department, the Megabus people, and I've had contact with them via email, are trying to look at how they could maybe shift their route schedule, but at this point, it hasn't been quote doable, but they are looking to see if there's some way that they can have the drop-off and the pickup not be at the same time when students are there. But, you know, it, it, we know that it's in the wrong spot, and moving it is a very long-term...
Right.
...solution. I was quite honestly surprised by the usage there. It's not just Megabus, it's, Rafford University brings the buses up there, Smartway Bus, the Megabus, it is a highly, highly-used facility, and it's grown very, very quickly.
My other question is, are we keeping parents informed as to our relationships and discussion and involvement? Are the parents aware of what we are about and what we're trying to do?
Yes, they are.
Through the, through the principal...
Through the school principals' communication directly to parents.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, any other items of unfinished business by school board members? Any items of new business by school board members?
Just like to remind the, really the teachers and the staff that we have, the Montgomery County Education Foundation sent out an email to all teachers about a month ago, reminding of our next grant cycle where we hope to give out over $5,000. We haven't had much of a response, if people actually have a way of seeing if those emails have been viewed or downloaded, and very little response, so we'd just like to encourage some movement there, hopefully.
Along with that, can we, well, I'll make the request if Nelson or Lois could, at their next meetings with their principals, talk about that, I'd appreciate it, because we've got this grant money we don't have to give it away, and we can't do it if people don't apply for grants.
We'll be happy to reinforce the grant cycle. We have our new Director of Human Resources with us today, and I thought perhaps the board might like to meet him, so if you don't mind, I'd like to ask him to stand, and I'll let you put a face with the name. We have Joe McAlara joining us today, and he is formerly from Bland County, and very happy to have him on board, so welcome, Joe. We look forward to having you as part of Montgomery County Public Schools.
Thank you for that. Any other announcements and information by school board members?
Just a reminder that I'll be out the next several meetings, probably back sometime during the month of late April. I'll be back.
There's with you, ma'am.
And with that, do you see the next item as agenda preparation that will be for the next school board meeting, which is 14th, what, 26th?
19th.
19th, wow, do the math, Wendell.
And Mr. Chair, I have an apology, because I did not see this wonderful March 50th calendar of events, Ms. Blackburn, I'm sorry. I just went down the bottom and didn't see it. Thank you, yes.
And with that, motion for adjournment.
So move.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or adjourned?
Second.